Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is a vertical city council meeting of the City of Dearborn Heights City Council. Present with us today, we have Council Chair Malinowski Maxwell, Council Proton Bazey, Councilman Muscat, Councilman Coniston, Councilman Abdallah, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, and Councilman Wenzel. We have all our councils here. So at this time, I'm going to state that Executive Order 2020-42 prohibits all public events of any number of people until after, well, end of May, the May 29th. This requires Dearborn Heights City Council to meet electronically. So this is Monday, May 11, 2020, our 2020-21 corporate fund budget. Opening remarks are my Mayor Pletko. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, let me give you a brief feel where we're at in the current budget year, but it also will affect next year. I have had a conversation with our City Treasurer, John Riley, because we have to watch very carefully the cash flows. John has gone through, analyzed it, and believes that we'll be in good shape through June 30th of this year. So we should be able to get through the budget year with sufficient amount of cash that there will be no need for borrowings at all. A good item was that we did get our April 1st state shared revenue from the State of Michigan, and it exceeded $1 million. And that was good news. A little bit less than what we expected, but that's within the range. Items for next year revenues are going to be very hard to forecast for any of us here. And I did talk with a couple members of the legislature that are on the appropriations, and they have indicated to me that they will, the state will have a good clear picture on state shared revenues after the May Revenue Conference, which is going to be held at 9:00 a.m. this Friday, May 15th in Lansing. It is viewable if anyone wishes to watch that. But that is, after that conference, the state will be able to come up with a determination of our state shared revenues. And of all the revenues items, that's the one that concerns me the most for next year. Now, in talking to Congresswoman Debbie Dingle, she has indicated that the Democrats in Washington are looking for a bill that would replace some of the lost revenue that states and cities that were hit hard with the virus have lost. Now, she, there's no way to estimate as to when something like that would pass and how much we would get. I did find out through talking with one of the state legislators that apparently Michigan has not spent its money from the first legislation that was passed in Washington. I don't know what's holding that up. I don't know how it would affect the city, but I found that interesting. The other things that I will let you know that I think are of significance is we do know that we have some CDBG monies that will be available, but they're very restricted, and it has to be related to the virus. But every little bit helps. And Joe Hescham and Lisa from the Fire Department have been working on that and making sure we're in compliance. We've also talked to Plant Moran to make sure that we maximize any and all monies that we can obtain. In addition, the items that currently, court revenues are going to be way down because the court's not open. And also, we, for a while, decided not to be doing any traffic enforcement. Now, that will change in the next year, but in the current year, we reduced that somewhat. Items that we've been spending a lot of time on, and I will tell you that I've been swapped. I had an eight o'clock conference call, a nine o'clock conference call, a 10 o'clock conference call, and now I've got this one. So in between, I'm going to grab a bite to eat because I am starved. But let me tell you what other communities, and I have three communities that I'm in constant contact with their supervisor or their mayor, and we chat as to how and what we are doing. Most of the communities are closed, and I don't see anybody opening till the 29th. We have ordered some handheld thermometers. We're going to require most likely anybody coming in, sitting hall with a mask. I still think we have to talk about how we keep the building clean. And we are putting more partitions in to keep separate the public from the employees. But we also have to deal where, in our offices, where we have desks right next to each other. That doesn't keep the six feet. So I'm actually getting input from Ford Motor Company and General Motors as to what they're doing for their office staff, and we will act accordingly. I've started to have discussions on early outs for general government employees. I'm going to come back to you, and I thought you would all be interested in maybe doing some kind of early out program that would reduce headcount. There is a hiring freeze. I think the last two people that will be hired are two police officers that there had been a commitment to, and I'm going to honor that commitment. Plus, in fact, the chief is leaving, and so one of those will be a swap, one for one. But it's so hard to get good police officers. Also, when you go through this budget, I think the capital outlay is at significant risk. I should tell you that the one item that we're not going to be able to get out of, and we really need as a group to work on, is the CSO projects that state has mandated, but that is in the water and sewer budget. Doesn't affect this one. One of the reasons that we looked for the early out was that John Selmy has talked to me about a program of reorganizing his particular department. And we think with the early out, that will facilitate him in reconstituting how that department functions and operates and where the women and men work in to make it more efficient. And that was a huge motivation in looking at the general government early out program, if we do that. Let me think if there's, I think, covered a lot of stuff, but I think we're going to be in a better position in a couple weeks. But I will tell you that there are eight executive orders by the governments, by the governor, that expire this week or within the next seven days. So we're going to have to watch to see which ones get included, don't get included. The other thing that is becoming more and more significant, and I don't know if any of you have experienced this. I've done, I've experienced a little bit of it. It's the fact that the post office is becoming almost non-functional. Walt Prushevitz indicated today at my department head meeting that normally the sort center that governs Dearborn Heights area has 200 employees in that sort center. They have not had more than 20 employees show up in the last month and a half for any particular day. So consequently, mail is just becoming almost non-functional. And he's had difficulty mailing out death notices and others. I say that because if this continues, and I did have a conversation with Congresswoman Debbie Dingle relative to this, and she said that the post office has gone to Congress and the president and said unless they get some immediate relief, they may be folding as a business. She indicated the legislature was willing to give the post office some money, and they want a lot of money. But the president said he was opposed to that. So I point that out because operationally wise, I can't imagine a post office not being there. But I know that I received some communication. Well, I'll tell you, I get, I have a subscription to the Indianapolis Star, and it's like, I didn't get any papers for three weeks, and then one day, I got four weeks worth of newspapers, all in one day. And, but Walt's been having a lot of problems trying to get normal correspondence out from the city. And I was, I share that with you, but I was not previously aware that it was affecting our door, our day-to-day operation. So that's a lot of information that I just gave to you. And we're constantly trying to track it. The one good news is that the amount of deaths happening in the Dearborn Heights and the amount of people that are being confirmed as having the virus have significantly been reduced in the last week. And that's, that is a good sign, and hopefully that'll continue. It has become very clear from my, I get included on the White House conference calls. Now, these are different than CNN. They include people from Health and Services to CDC. It, they're very informative, and you get speakers on there that are really, have their hands on what is going on. And the general item, because these calls, when they take place, the one question that is often asked, well, how much longer before this whole crisis is over? And I will share with you that the response from people like CDC of the Human Services is that until there is a vaccine for this particular virus, the crisis is not over. So the last thing I will indicate, because it does affect the total community, it's becoming very apparent to me that many school systems are simply, and may become, non-functional as a result of the decrease in revenue that they will receive from the state. And they're not operating right now in their regular fashion. And that coupled with the significant reductions that they're going to get from the State of Michigan is going to put many of the school districts, all of them are going to have some suffering, but some of them could be very well on the brink of not being able to operate and function if they were to reopen. I share that with you because we have five school districts in Dearborn Heights. They're not all in the same situation. But in the calls that I participate in, and I usually participate, two or three of them a day, it's becoming very evident to me that there is a major crisis taking place in the educational area for youngsters. And how that comes out to play throughout the State of Michigan, I don't have an answer for. But I think you, as policy leaders, ought to be aware of the fact that all the school districts are in serious, serious shape. So that's my report.
Thank you. Any comments from anybody?
Council Chair.
Is that Councilman Coniston?
Regarding the mail, which I think is critical, the U.S. mail, our mail here in this building, which is right down the street from City Hall, has been sporadic, and it's just like the mayor mentioned. We won't get mail for a couple days, and then we'll get four days worth of mail. And I've been down to the post office. There are some different problems with the carriers, and a lot of people not working. But everybody, I think, is anxious to see the state get back to work.
Yeah, and I understand. My main concern too is if we have to go to absent, all absentee ballots. That's, that's a concern of mine. How are we going to pull that off if the post office is not doing that much?
Right.
You know? Anybody else?
Council Chair.
Abdallah?
Mr. Mayor, do you have any idea at this particular point as far as when you foresee the city actually opening up to the general residents? Is it going to be parallel to the executive order as far as towards the end of the month, including the Building Department at this point?
Yeah, I had discussions with the supervisor of Brownstown Township, and Andy's a good friend of mine. And with the mayor of Ellen Park this morning was on a conference call with Congresswoman Dingle. And the communities all believe that we are prohibited from opening before the governor's order on the 28th. So the 28th, the 29th, I'm not sure when the 28th and the 29th is. The calendar in front of me. I don't know if that will.
I can look it up.
Everybody muted themselves.
That's a Thursday. That's a Thursday.
Okay, so the earliest would be probably the following Monday. And what we've done is we ordered some hand.
The mayor's, okay, the mayor's muted. Everyone's muted.
Can you hear me?
I unmuted myself.
Yeah, you have to unmute yourself when you're speaking. Yeah, there's too much background.
Okay, Denise, Denise, you're muted.
Okay, yeah. All right, let's just leave the mayor is the only one that's unmuted besides me and whoever we call on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Okay.
Yes, I can.
The, so what we are all, we all believe the City Hall cannot open till the governor removes that executive order. So we would not be open till June. In the meantime, we've had discussions, John Selmy, Chrissy, myself, Lee, and Elizabeth and others, because we've got to protect the people coming in City Hall and also the employees. And so we're going to have barriers between the public. And, and so we have to do something for my office, for the Water Department, which we started doing for the Assessors Office and HR. So we think we can get those established. Now, what I found out just recently is there may not be an ability of a municipality, let's say somebody came in and the police officer said, I'm sorry, ma'am or sir, you have to wear a mask. I'm not sure we can take people's temperatures. I'm not sure that we can require masks. That is, I've got a couple state legislators that are pursuing that, not only on behalf of Dearborn Heights, but Westland, Taylor, Brownstown Township, the whole area, as to how much control the municipality can do. But we, we need to be able to provide a safe environment for both the employees and our customers. And one of the questions that we have not solved is the fact that, okay, you could, we could go in there prior to reopening and get it fumigated and cleaned, and it's just perfect. Cleaner than a hospital. But what are you going to do after you open? Because how many people will come in that may have the virus? And you can't, we could not afford every day to do that same cleaning situation. So we are looking at alternatives. The Fire Department has a cleaning device that they utilize, and that might be one particular solution. The other thing that's going to come into play is the hardest-hit age group are seniors. And I'm not sure that the senior centers are going to be the first ones to open. And I don't know how long before we will reopen up the senior centers or any recreation facility because of the risk involved for our customers. So it's a long answer to your question. I'm looking at early June.
Councilman Muscat, you're next.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I guess this would be for you. What can we do to help the real estate people since they probably have a lot of houses that need to be inspected as far as setting those up so that at least they have a appointment schedule going?
Well, I've been working with the director in regards to, but I've told him to use his judgment as to whether or not, because the employees were really not too excited about going in some of these homes. And, and I told Larry that to use his own discretion. So I've not ordered, and I'm not sure that I can order in regards to that, that those inspectors are contractual. But I don't want to put people at risk. But my understanding was, in discussions that I've had, and maybe Mr. Abdallah, who's in the industry, there is, there is a way that these real estate agents in the process, you can still transfer a house, but my, but I think that there's certain kinds of representations that are being made that at some future time, there may be a, an opening or review. But I may be wrong.
The letter for closing purposes only suffices to be able to close a deal, but you are putting potentially a buyer at risk because they're buying a property without having it inspected. So if there's safety issues, they're taking on that chance that there could be something wrong. Now, they could do a private inspection, but it's not the same as the city inspection. Two different parameters.
Okay, we have Director Damski on here. I'm going to unmute you. Director, are you there? Director Damski? He might have been just waiting for his turn. I'm going to mute him back up. I thought he might have wanted to add something to it.
Council Chair, along the same thing with Mr. Abdallah. Usually the private inspections are a little bit more thorough than our city inspections. And I would recommend anybody that buys a house to get a private inspection. And I don't know if the city can suspend our inspections for a short period of time till we get a handle on this virus. That way, we don't have, you know, loss of business in our business district.
There are two different inspections, but.
Yeah, I understand. I think the private ones are a little bit more.
No, because it's not a licensed or regulated industry. So technically, I, who's totally unhandy, can technically open up Dave Abdallah's private inspections effective today and be up and running.
Okay.
Do you want me to put you on speakerphone to speak with him? Okay, we have Director Damski here. He can't get his video to work, his audio, so he's going to talk on my phone. Go ahead.
Schedule inspection. We are putting him in the order they come in. They are paying for it. We are given temporary closing letters. And that's how we're handling it right now until we start going out to do inspections. We have been dealing with the realtors ever since this started. And even the building permits, we've been issuing the same way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry. Okay. I'm trying to find any other questions from any other council people before we move on to the next part of our budget. Okay, next, we are going to go on to Controller Vance. This is the Council Department of Revenues and General Government.
Council, I've given you a budget. The mayor has really pretty much discussed certain revenue issues, so I'm not going to repeat it. If you have any questions with regards to the revenue items that have been submitted, I'd be glad to try to answer those questions. And then really, when it comes to my department, it's pretty straightforward. It's primarily wages. So I'm opened up for any questions that anyone would like to ask.
Yeah, Councilman Abdallah, hold on, I'll unmute you. I'm going to unmute all the council people. Abdallah, do you want to unmute yourself?
All right.
There you go.
Hey, Controller, how are you?
I am fine. How are you?
Good. So other than the things that the mayor mentioned as far as changes in revenue, is there anything on your end, on that page, that you've seen a totally different or drastic change from previous years?
Um, I have noted some changes. One of them is the PEG funding and the cable money. That money, my anticipated amounts for this year is decreasing about 3.5% from the prior year. And I think we will continue to see a decline on that as people are cutting the cord with cable and doing streaming. So that's where I put my conservative numbers in here based off of the quarters that we've already received. So that's one note. Let's see, really, just about everything else was really, really close. The only other thing that I can note is that I've been working closely during this time with Plant Moran on our cost allocation. And I think we've got a pretty good handle. So you'll notice the contribution from the Water Department is going up based off of the cost-sharing allocation that we have developed together. We're still tweaking it, but I think this is a safe amount right now until we've got that last little bit of it fine-tuned. But it's probably 99% fine-tuned. So you'll see a little bit of a jump in there. Same thing with reimbursement from MVHF. That hasn't been adjusted in several years. And I basically took in that, just in case you don't know, is the road fund money allocation for the Act 51. That I updated to the amount that we currently, we received the prior year, final numbers. And I don't know what the.
That money, that money comes from the state, correct?
Yeah, I believe. It's, yeah, it's an allocation of the admin for the Act 51. It's the gas tax. So that number might end up being set back down a little bit because, of course, during this timeframe, gas tax money is not coming in, just like state shared revenue. So we could see an adjustment in that. Once we, we'll hear about that in that revenue meeting, after that meeting on the 15th that the mayor mentioned. So we'll have a little bit of a better handle on that. But currently, that's where I put it because we have been getting more funds than what we've been budgeting. So that's about really the highlights of the revenues ends. And then, like I said, my department is, it's pretty straightforward. It's wages, it's, it's office supplies and such.
Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that because I've been on the, we've had weekly calls with Michigan Department of Treasury, and they're recommending, because the state looks, I know the mayor already alluded to this earlier, but the state is looking to have a shortfall, oh, sorry about my bird, a $5 to $8 billion. There was a B, billion. So with that in mind, they're recommending, when we're doing, and MML had a call on this as well, that we should be doing our projections at 50%. And I'm looking at this, and I know that this was done earlier, this was March 30th. Are we taking that, are you waiting on that call on the 15th? Or are you going to take into consideration that the shared revenue and the Act 51 money is going to be down?
We are waiting on that conference and other factors, like the mayor said. We're looking into, hopefully, that the federal government supplies local municipalities with some funding. So far, they haven't, but we're strongly urging it because the cities and the schools, as the mayor put it, and the state is going to have a shortfall. But until we see where this all aligns, it's kind of really hard to pinpoint and go through the exercise of trying to cut things when we really don't know that number. So we are planning on waiting until after this conference and seeing what the conference states, seeing if we get any funding from the federal government. There's a couple things in play that we want to see what happens before we make any final adjustments to the revenue. But as the mayor stated, we, we could anticipate some cuts in certain areas. And state shared revenue and Act 51 are definitely one of them, both.
Okay, right now, we have three people, Councilman Coniston, Councilman Muscat, and then Councilman Abdallah. Councilman Coniston, did you still have a question?
Got to unmute.
I am, I don't know.
If anyone knows, that's.
If anyone knows, that's the important question, what the, uh, hit will be to the City of Dearborn Heights budget? Because I mean, we all know for one thing, houses now aren't being sold. We enjoyed houses being sold in the economy, uh, before the, uh, lockdown for, you know, very high prices and upping our revenue base. But, uh, uh, any idea on, uh, changes in property values? Any projections, Mayor?
Okay, at this time, Councilman Coniston, we have Controller Vance here giving her a budget report. Um, at this time, we can't, that's not appropriate to be asking of the mayor when we've got Controller Vance's time.
I'll hold off.
Thank you. Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, uh, I guess the problem I'm having is, uh, the, the only thing that I got printed out here that was sent to me is just the, uh, uh, salaries and, uh, expenses, and I don't have anything for revenues, uh. So I'm not, I'm kinda looking at this blindly. Um, I'm, I don't know what, what to say.
It was all sent to April 1st.
Well, I, I understand it was sent, but when I opened it and printed it, I'm just now noticing I don't have it printed. So.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, because I believe in full it was sent. Um, we couldn't get you the additional amount. I could resend the whole file to you if you'd like, but.
Uh, I'm gonna, I got my wife, I just sent her a message to see, bring me my iPad, maybe I can bring it up. Okay.
Well, if you need any other assistance, I'd be glad to help you.
Yeah, I'm sure you will. I just wanna, you know, I'm looking at this blindly. And, uh, I, I got some questions on, on some of this, like, you know, how many part-time people do we have working for the controller?
Oh, I only have, and it's, I, I don't have any currently, but last year I had an intern. And when I put this budget together, I was possibly looking for another college intern to come in to help me with, um, accounting rules and stuff. It, it's just, it was a placeholder, just in case I find someone. I'm assuming at this point that maybe that's not gonna happen. But, um, with the new, uh, uniform chart of accounts that's coming through, I thought if I got someone in, they could help our department, um, help set that up with the BSNA software when it comes through. But it also, that requirement has been now extended by the state. I don't have a new date. It's been extended indefinitely. But in actual, we need to, we were supposed to have it done by, like, our next budget season so that the new chart of account numbers would be in for the new budget. So I was considering having someone come in the summer and work with, with, um, creating the new account numbers, the GL account numbers that they're requiring us to change them. So.
Uh, the, the other thing is, and I hate to bring this up because it's always something that's, kinda hard, is the salary increases, not knowing where we're gonna be at, uh, financially here. But, uh, in my, my, when I first started looking at this before the coronavirus hit, I, I was willing to give, you know, anywhere between three and six percent, uh, raises. Um, and, uh, but I don't know how anybody else feels, but, uh, uh, it may be tough to go the full amount here. Yeah, but I was always thinking three to six percent. I don't know how everybody else feels, and I'll let that be open for discussion for everybody else.
Okay, well, at this time, I'm gonna have Councilwoman Abdallah go, and then we're gonna allow, and then Councilman, and I'm gonna allow, um, Director Vance to please finish your presentation before any further questions.
Okay, Controller, on the budget part in regards to the, um, salaries, I'm not sure if this is a typo or if you could give me a clarification if you don't mind. If you look under clerical three, you have currently budgeted one half of an employee.
Yeah.
Halftime. Um, and then requesting the full, okay, which would be double that. But then if you look at the salary, the proposed salary is still basically right around the same amount as the current 2018, 2019 salary. So instead of from going from forty-some thousand to double, because it would be doubling it now, it's still the same amount of forty-one thousand. Can you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, that's just the way I'm presenting it because if you had seen the prior year one, even though you seen the quarter, current salary, you would've seen the 50% amount in that budget. Um, and the reason why I'm changing this, this was within our cost allocation study with Plant Moran. Um, the halftime employee is Matthew Paul, our purchasing order, and previous to this, he was split 50% Controller, General Government, 50% Water. So instead of splitting him that way, we let it work its way through this allocation process that we're doing. So that's why I'm putting him to 100% in my department now, and then we bill the water department in that allocation. So that's, there's a change in there.
That clarifies it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Batty?
Yeah, so, uh.
Councilwoman Batty?
Yeah, so I, I guess, yeah, one of the questions is already answered about the state shared revenues. You know, obviously we can't put that mu- amount, you know, the six million till we find out what that is. So that was addressed. Uh, the other, uh, other two, which was, uh, the 20th District, uh, Court and the fees for licenses and permits. So I don't know why we can't project these two numbers since we control those right now. I mean, it's up, up to the, the end of what the mayor mentioned. Uh, June is when they anticipate everybody getting back to work. So with that, I think there should be a projection as to if we anticipate going back to, uh, back to, uh, work in June, uh, what those, uh, anticipated revenues will be. I mean, I don't need an answer right now, but I think, you know, obviously before this budget is approved, you know, we, we need a better projection than that. Uh, so that's just, I guess, a, a comment. Uh, and also, I, I'm in agreement with Councilman Muscat, you know, before we go to any pay raises, we have to figure out what this state of our city is before any of the raises are, are paid. Just to make sure that we keep all the employees employed instead of going for some raises and some, you know, get, get let go later on, you know, because we don't know what our revenue is gonna be. So we gotta make sure we keep everybody, uh, working.
And I'm in agreement with that, but this was prepared beforehand. And, and like we said, we kinda want an idea. When it comes to the district court, if we do get the police officers out and everything and the court starts returning to number, to normal, that number could be closer to what we've projected anyway because that starts July 1st. But we need, you know, we need to talk, discuss it. So it could be adjusted. Same thing with, um, the permits. If everything starts back up, then these numbers could be close to obtainable. I mean, there could be a decrease in people pulling permits because of the economy, but that's a real hard thing. I mean, we could, we did adjust them to what we felt at the time. Um, you'll see maybe some lines decreasing already in the building permits and stuff, and some might've increased uh, based on pro- projections of projects that we anticipate happening. But of course, we will need to know if, if, if all of this is gonna free shit. So all of this budget really is gonna have to really be determined on what happens with the continued stay at home and the, the revenue sources adjusting.
Okay, at this time I have other council people raising hands. I'm gonna let you know I'm no longer allowing them to speak until after Controller Vance is done with her presentation so we can move forward and keep on our time.
Presentation, so.
Okay, then.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Okay, thanks. I have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Um, do you still have a question? She had raised her hand, but I know she's going between a couple of different things. She's muted herself again. All right, Councilman Muscat.
Oh, hi.
Unmute yourself. Oh, Councilwoman.
Hi, do you want me to go ahead or do you want me to wait?
Can I, can I ask that question?
Okay.
Uh, Controller Vance, could you send me that information again that I didn't have? I'm trying to look for it on my iPad and I can't find it.
I can send you the whole budget. It'll have the whole thing in the first couple pages. Yes, I can.
Yeah, no problem. You don't have to do it right now, just.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, did you want to speak now?
I did, yeah, and I'm sorry because I'm kinda toddling here. Um, my, my thing was about the pay raises. I know you guys were talking about that and, and I agree with other council members. I don't think this is a time for raises, um, especially with the forecast and what we're seeing. I think it would be, in fact, I was gonna recommend, um, for elected to take, um, a, a cut because other, we see it across the state. The governor, her team, they've all taken cuts. I mean, we, they know, they already see the forecast, what it looks like. And for us to be saying, well, we're gonna expect it to recover, we're gonna look for this to happen, I don't think that's a way to do a budget. I'd rather us be safe than sorry than to come back and have, you know, um, a shortfall or a deficit. I mean, most communities, including Wayne County, they have hiring freezes, they're doing furlough days. There aren't increases, and so I think be mindful of that.
Okay, and right now I have lost my video. If Councilman, um, Batty can please take over until I get back in properly? I might have to sign off and sign back in.
Okay, I mean, I, I can see you, we can hear you, uh, Council Chair.
Yeah, I lost everybody. I've only got one little picture there, so I don't know what button, what did this.
Okay, uh, I think, uh, next, uh, Councilman Muscat, uh, did you have anything else to add?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, so I think that Council Chair, uh, mentioned earlier in the meeting that, uh, uh, for residents, they can, uh, ask questions at the end of the, uh, the budget meeting. So for right now, we're gonna hold off on questions by residents till the end of this meeting. Um, so the next, next on the agenda, uh, is, uh, HR Human Resources, uh, Director Sabota Perry. Are you ready?
I am.
Okay, go, go ahead. I don't, if you wanna do that, if you wanna go through the whole agenda or pretty much, I mean, you know, you, you presented, but, you know, to us. So I don't know if, uh, if you wanna go through that or have the council members ask questions.
Well, I'll just say a few things.
Okay.
We're looking on page 20. I know nothing is labeled. That's the General Civil Service, um, Department 220. If you're looking at the depart, if you don't have the page number, then 21 is Act 78. That's the Police and Fire, General Government, Civil Service. I'm proposing no changes in either of those. And then my budget is under, on page 24, it labeled it, and it's 226. I propose no changes in that one, and I apologize if I'm screaming. It just feels like I wanna project my voice so you can hear. I don't know. Um, and so, you know, no proposals, nothing that you haven't already said about the salary piece, um, you know? And that's it, you know, no change in staff.
Thank you. Uh, does anybody have questions, uh, for the director?
Uh, let me.
Uh, Councilman Muscat?
Uh, you know, on everything here, I say, I, I see dues members. What dues do people pay? I mean, just about every one of these things have dues and membership fees.
So, so for me, I can't speak for everyone, but for me, it's professional memberships to HR things. So Society of Human Resource Management, um, there's also another one, IPMA. Then, then if we order a test from them, we get a membership deal through it. Um, so it keeps you updated. It gives you um, information about the logs. So that's what my two are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, uh, some, uh, Councilman Coniston got his hand up. Uh, Deputy Chair, thank you. French benefits, particularly medical, uh, uh, Director Perry, do you see that going up, staying about the same?
Okay, so this is tricky. So right now, as you know, a lot of claim, a lot of services aren't being done unless you are a COVID patient or having a major medical emergency, like a cardiac event where you're going to the hospital. If you have a knee replacement, it's been canceled or postponed into July. So in the, all right, so claims are at a six lag, six month lag. So in about six months from now, we're gonna see our medical claims go down because we're all staying in our home and we're not seeing the doctor. We're not getting any tests done, okay? Unless we were a COVID patient. The problem is, what happens six months from that point? What happens a year, 18 months from now? So I'm saying, even though you're gonna see claims go down in six months, keep these numbers as is because what is going to happen? Are orthopedic surgeons gonna double their price for the knee replacement to make up revenue? Um, what are the hospitals gonna do to recoup some of their costs? It will, we will eventually be affected. I just don't think we'll be affected in the very short, you know, in the short future. It's, I worry about 18 months, two years. Um, that's what I'm worried about.
What, what are we self-insured on, if anything, the city's medical?
Uh, we are self-insured for all active employees, all retirees under 65 years of age or Medicare eligibility. So then those retirees go to a Medicare Advantage plan. So a huge amount is all self-insured, and that's why a huge amount isn't getting the services that we usually have. Even dental care, vision care, we're not going to those doctors.
I'm back.
Got you.
I don't know what I did. I'm like, okay, thank you.
So it's, we're self-insured, administered by Blue Cross, the, the claims and so forth, correct?
Director Sabota?
That was accurate, yes. Self-insured, administered through Blue Cross Blue Shield, if you didn't get that answer.
Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Is there any further questions from anyone? At this time, I'd like.
Council Chair, Council Chair.
Oh, Councilwoman Abdallah, I'm sorry.
No problem. Director, just had a quick question for you. Uh, from the 2018, 19 activity, it went from the 116,000 down to 108,000, and I'm just curious as to why there was a drop in the salary part.
Wait for me, um?
Yes. This will be on the first line, uh, line item number 706000, salary is the first one.
Um, is it when my pay was adjusted? I'd have to go back. Remember my pay was budgeted up and we got up for a few paychecks and then it was taken back down?
Okay.
I think that.
That might be it, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Um, at this time, okay, I'm sorry, but I was out of it. We were on, listen, we've done all your reports then. Okay, at this time, we are gonna move on to the fire department with Keith Robin.
Okay, Council, um, you know, why don't I start with, um, the dues membership question? I'm not sure if you're here, Council Chair, when, um, Councilman Muscat asked about the dues membership. He sees that recurring in a lot of different budgets and just had, just wasn't sure what that was. Um, and that's actually one of the topics that, that is being raised for me this year. Um, it's, it's been at $9,500 for many years. Um, and the vast majority of that, like, almost, uh, I think it's just over $8,000, like, eighty-two hundred dollars or something. It goes towards, um, Western Wayne Fire Chiefs, the Mutual Aid Association. Being a part of that Mutual Aid Association is our contract with all the surrounding communities for when we have, you know, overrun a cause. But along with that, it has the Special Operations Team, which is the Hazmat Team and the U.S.R. Team. And, and that's some of the best teams in the state, actually, that, um, so if we have a hazmat spill in the city, we have access to those teams. And so that's, that's why, that's the biggest part of our dues and membership. And actually, this year, for the first time, Western Wayne, I mean, for the first time in many, many years, Western Wayne is actually raising their, their dues up by, it's gonna be just over $2,000 for us. So, so my, the line for dues membership was 9,500. It's going up to 11,500. And that's they changed their per capita cost, so, you know, it hits all the different communities, um, you know, in proportion to your population size. So it's just, uh, just to get that one out of the way. I don't know if, if you guys had any more questions about that. There, there are other things too. Southeast Michigan Fire Chiefs and International Association of Fire Chiefs, those are the three main, uh, memberships that we're, that we're part of. With the largest one obviously being Western Wayne Mutual Aid Association. Good?
Okay, is there any questions? Is there any questions from anybody? Councilwoman Bella? Whoops, hold on a minute, I thought you were unmuted. Let's unmute all the people.
They can unmute themselves.
Okay. Fire Chief, first of all, thank you for everything that you and your department have done, and the Police Department, everybody else has put their lives on the line for us, much appreciated. But I had a question for you in regards to, between the 2019-20 amended budget on capital outlay, went from 423,000, which was quite a bit of a drop from the initial budgeted amount of 1,66,000, but then, now you go back up to 773,000. What is it that you're projecting on purchasing in capital outlay for this upcoming year?
So, so the biggest item in there is for, for a new fire engine. You can also see our, our repair and maintenance is going up quite a bit because we, we actually went through our entire repair maintenance budget. We have, we have two fire engines in particular. One is 24 years old and the other one is 26 years old. And, and even though they're in reserve, we have our, our new ladder truck in, in the north end, and then our, the newer, some, the Marion, the engine in this, in the south end that we got through Tiffa and Grant. That one's already seven years old, but these other trucks, you know, they go out of service, our first line trucks go out of service, even for regularly scheduled maintenance or breaks or whatever they need done. And these other trucks have to go into, into service right away, and they still have to pass DOT inspections and things along those lines. We have to keep them, you know, as if they're, they need, you know, we don't know when they're going to be put into service, or if we have a big storm or something, they're put into service. So they always have to be ready to go, and they're very expensive to maintain. And so, like I said, 24 and 26 years old as well, beyond their, you know, serviceable years. And now, I've, I've been talking with the mayor about this quite a bit, because a new truck is, I put 600,000, that, which is going to be the, the majority of this capital outlay. And we may come up with a different plan depending on the financial circumstances we find ourselves in, whether we have to finance it or something along those lines. But, you know, the cost of maintaining them and to keep them running versus, you know, buying a new one, it, it just becomes a decision you finally have to make to get, to get rid of these older trucks.
So with the COVID crisis going on right now, is there any chance of maybe more grants, et cetera, et cetera, coming from the federal and the state level? Because obviously, you guys are first responders and essential services, obviously. Is there any chance of maybe the government loosening up a little bit and giving much more money to the local municipalities?
Well, we, we hope so, and, and as the mayor mentioned earlier, I know that, you know, Lieutenant Martin, she's EMS coordinator, and she does a great running for us, she's working closely with Chief Staff Laszlo and Emergency Manager Gavin. We want to make sure that we're getting the most, there's, there's several different sources of money, federal money, grant money that's out there right now. You, the mayor mentioned the CDBG with Director Hashem. And so we're working together with that one, we want to make sure we're getting the most beneficial use of the grants that are out there. And we, we can't, we have to be sure that we don't, you know, ask for money to cover one expense and then, then do the same expense again with another grant, because obviously, that's, that's not allowed. And so we have to track everything very carefully. Some grants cover 90% with the 10% match, others are 75% with the 25% match. So we're just trying to make sure that there's a lot of logistics and planning to try to, to try to make sure we're doing the, the most advantageous use of the grant money that's out there. Whether, whether there'll be grants for a fire truck or not, you know, I don't know. We've put in for one nearly every year, we're putting in for one again this year. For some reason, they've been much more stingy with the fire trucks.
I see, I see, okay, thank you, Chief.
Does anyone have any further questions? Okay, at this time, we are-
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, Chief, you have part-time here, do we have part-time workers in the fire?
So, so we have $2,500 scheduled for part-time workers, and what that's for is, we, we had to use in the last two or three years, but our, the, the administrative assistant up front, if she has to be gone for an extended period of time, like more than a week or two weeks if something comes up, we need to be able to have someone else step into that role because of our EMS billing, she, she's the, one of the key pieces in that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that she does that keeps the department running. But the EMS billing in particular, because if you go beyond 30 days, you start to lose the amount that you can actually bill for. And so we have to keep on top of when those billings are sent in, and, and that's the person in that role who does that. So we have to keep money aside just in case she's going to be gone for an extended period.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further questions?
Madam Chair. Chief, manpower-wise, are, how many firefighters are we down now as far as what we should have staff-wise?
Right now, we, we've had two retirements recently, and so we, we were in the process of putting a list together when all of this started. And now, come July, we're looking at several more retirements. And so our, actually, my overtime, I did up it by 25,000, and that's, that was with anticipating even before the COVID. Sometimes there's difficulties in finding, you know, enough people to get back to full staffing. Now with the, with the problems that we've run into, we're going to have to, you know, wait and see where we're at before we aggressively move forward with this. But right now, we're down two firefighters.
All right, thank you, I'm all set, thank you.
Any further questions from Council? At this time, we will move on. Our next item is Information Technology, National Director Felkamp. Am I here? I'm not seeing him on here.
Yeah.
I'm here.
He's on.
He's here.
There you are.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, good. So, I'm not sure what, what your format is. Basically, we provide to the administration a five-year technology replacement plan with recommendations of what should and shouldn't be replaced based on a five-year equipment lifespan. We have, you know, we've submitted that and updated it for the mayor's office each year. And then from that, Chrissy will look at that and determine what equipment she believes is, is due for replacement, and we will support whatever is determined that, you know, you have funding to, to cover. So we, we will make sure, you know, everything is maintained as best as it can be, even if it doesn't get replaced on that exact cycle. So we, you know, we're not, we're not actually asking for the budget. We're making recommendations, and then we will follow up with supporting your particular implementation as, as best as we can.
Madam Chair.
At this point, I was going to ask Felkamp, what part of that five-year replacement plan plan are you in right now?
Well, we've, we've actually gave you a plan shortly after we first started supporting the city. So it is probably actually in its, in its fifth year, although we may have started it and provided that sometime into it. So we're, we're working through that cycle, I, I believe, and I don't know, Christina is on, on the line. I think we identified, I think there were 30 machines and a number of network devices that needed to be upgraded, firewalls and, and that sort of thing, so.
Christine Laszlo, would you like to respond to that?
I just, like Doug said, that there was a five-year plan, and Tarek went through it this year, updated it all. So we went with what we actually need. It, it's not something that, when we looked at capital outlay, there's no huge projects in there that, um, that could be postponed or anything. This is just, most of it is on the, excuse me, most of it's the fees for, I'm missing a word, Doug, for the Windows system, for the new licenses, the continuing for that.
Yeah, for the Office 365.
Right, and then, like you said, there's some different buildings. I, I can get you the list that Tarek sent me to Council, but it's, it's just basic stuff.
Yeah, because I guess my main question too is a lot of employees, I understand, had some difficulty working from home because of the system that we have now. Are you involved in upgrading that so in the future, we would be able to work from home more smoothly?
Just so you're aware, you weren't really, the connections from home were being done through TeamViewer in the past. And we had several requests for that, obviously, that wasn't part of our five-year planning because there wasn't a big push to work from home before this event. But that being said, we supported those that did have TeamViewer or needed to use TeamViewer. We got those people running, but after we did a number of them, Tarek said, look, I'd, I'd much rather do it the way we do it at the city, and that is to establish a true VPN, a virtual private network client, so that we can have people connect to their desktops properly with all the security and be a little more reliable and, and more secure. So we've implemented that, I think they've rolled out a couple of, gotten a few people established on that. That seems to be working out better than the TeamViewer model. It's, uh, it's, uh, more integrated to the backend, and it, it enforces all of our security that, that we put in on your firewalls.
Councilman Bazey, do you have a question?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to ask, they kind of touched a little bit on it. So in 2019 and 2020 amended budget was, the first one was 86 for the, for the maintenance and capital outlay 165. So for the 2021 budget, so it went from 86 to 155,000, almost doubled. So I, I just wanted to find out, like, what type of, I know you mentioned some servers and that, you know, is, is there a number that we can look at, you know, before we approve the budget to see what's, what that entails?
I think Chris, Christine has all of, all of that, what, what was decided upon as being necessary. So we should be able to establish where that, that came from. I don't have that at my fingertips right now.
No, yeah, Tarek emailed it to me, like I said, I can give it to Council. I can't give it today, but I can go in and I can look, I have to physically be there to grab it.
We, we appreciate a copy if you could, all of us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Muscat has something.
Councilman Muscat, you're next, please.
Yeah, a, a couple of things for Mr. Felkamp. One, I know that we've had problems internally with emails. I guess every time we turn around, we have email issues. Is there a reason why that happens?
The, and I'm not exactly sure what, what items you're, you're dealing with. We did have to move you off of the email system that had been established even before we, we came on. That company went out of business, and we had to quickly convert to a web-based email, which was similar to the old one. But the, the problems I've been made aware of are through, like, the clerk's office where we've had some issues with people being blacklisted and that sort of thing. And that's based on how many, how many emails get sent out, and they, they do some security rules in the backend of things. We, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure which, which items you're, we can address the individual items, but all of that being said, that was not to be a, a permanent solution. That is a relatively inexpensive solution, and our goal is to move you onto a platform, Microsoft platform that will properly support the city, and that's the Office 365 initiative.
And to continue, if you can, if I can continue, please. And so, you know, because I've heard the mayor say they've had email issues, and I don't know exactly who, but that's what I've heard, is the email issues. And so what you do is you just give recommendations of what needs to be done, and then it's up to us to go ahead and identify what we need to do and let you do it or pay for it or whatnot, right?
Right, with regard to the email system that people have been on right now, there are default thresholds in terms of storage and that sort of thing. So we've responded to calls when people say they've, their mailbox is full and that sort of thing. We can expand that very quickly, and we normally do it within a minute of somebody calling us. We've developed, built the groups that are required for departments to receive their emails, and, and we've gone to everyone's desktop that actually primarily works from a desktop as opposed to just over the web, and made sure that their Outlook is synchronized with that email system so that they've got a desktop version of, of their email.
So it would be, it would behoove us to have somebody that's got some sort of Microsoft certifications, certifications that know what they're looking at to say, hey, we need to do this and need to do that?
With, with the Office 365, we would get the assistance of the, the provider of, of the email to get it orig, help us originally set it up. I do have staff who have trained themselves and, and manage our, our exchange servers and are, have been very, become very familiar with the Office 365 management. So that would, the ongoing support of it would be definitely through us. But the original setup of Office 365, you normally would, would, whoever you're buying it from, you'd pay for some hours for rapid configuration of that. And I believe we built that into the conversion into the model that Christine has provided you.
What I was, what I was pertaining to is what I said, to have someone that's, that's Microsoft certified, is when you make recommendations on what to do with firewalls or servers, is to have somebody that truly understands that to say, yes, we do need them. Or is that left up to you?
Well, within, with regard to all the firewall issues, which is not a Microsoft product, all the firewalling, all your security, you know, Tarek is a network security administrator, and actually, I've had a number of communities call him, and even the vendors get assistance from Tarek when he, he, when they're having difficulties with their security setup. So I'm, between Tarek and, and his resources, we, we have good coverage in terms of making sure your network is secure, in terms of answering day-to-day email questions. We do have a team that will research that and find, find the solution for you. They are not, they've been certified, and I, I don't know each of our guys' certification, but they, they have the ability to, you know, answer, I'd say, 99% of the questions, and they have resources to help find the answer through Microsoft or whoever the Microsoft representative is to get you back up and running.
Okay, at this time, Christine Laszlo has been wanting to speak for a while, so let's-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. On Councilman Bazey and Councilman Muscat, you asked a couple of questions about the email. On Doug Felkamp, actually, Tarek with Doug, provided, quote, "last September", and it went to Council to, for the new Windows. On, that was set to go, and on, Council approved the, the new Windows on the-
Office 365.
Office 365, I'm getting tied for some reason. Um, so with that, on Tarek and Doug and the Dearborn IT team then sought out some way to implement this. So after Council approved it, and Doug, you can talk a little bit more about the part-timer that came through and looked at everybody's needs because we needed to know how many licenses we had, how many people were working on the actual desktops, again, my birds every time they talk, how many people were looking on the, and this is the only place I can do it, right? How many people were working on desktops, how many people are working where they just need to log in with a user license? And then after they got that number, it was about the end of the year, Tarek and Doug had a third party that they introduced the city, and they were working on a quote to come in and actually install this with everybody. The last, I talked to you guys, I mean, not the last, but in February, Tarek was looking at getting a number on, from this guy, and then COVID hit. So I think a lot of the issues, I, I know personally, the issues that we have, yes, they're being addressed by Dearborn IT if we call them with the email and other things, but again- but again, well, the biggest issue, now I was working from home, but the biggest issue or issues that people are having will all be fixed with the Office 365 conversion. I think they got the firewalls up, which helped tremendously. We, I think the next is just the 365. And Doug, you can talk more about it more technically. And Councilman Muscat and Councilman Bazey mentioned emails and other issues that everybody was having. It's also the platforms, the different platforms that we're running off of and people not being able to communicate on the same level. So it'll put everybody on the same level.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Felkamp. Why are you, okay, you changed screens.
Right next.
Who is the person, the main person in charge of the email system?
Pardon me?
Who's the main person that is in charge of these emails? I mean, there's got to be one main person that can access them all correctly when there's a problem to go in and troubleshoot them.
Well, we have, generally, all of us can get into the email system to help with that, but generally, either I will get, I will actually deal with it directly if somebody has contacted me, Lee Harrison, Mark Swittriss. They are able to, Matt, even though he handles the more technical end of things, he's jumped on and if there's an issue and either of those people are not available. But the email system, you know, any one of our guys can research the problem. Lee and I have probably the most experience in terms of rapidly, you know, recognizing what the issue is. If it is a firewall issue, you know, normally, you know, something where somebody is being blocked by another agency and that sort of thing, I'll get either Tarek or Matt involved to look at whatever error messages are part of that and help the person resolve that with the other end of things. Because often, you know, other agencies will block emails or blacklist you for some reason and it's not the fault of the city. It has to do with what else is going on and what their triggers are in terms of recognizing the junk out there, so.
Now, who at the City Hall would have access to this besides your group?
She meant the administrator. Who's the administrator from the city? That's what the council chair is referring to.
At Dearborn Heights?
Yes.
I don't think any, we've given anybody the administrator access to the account other than because the actual account is paid for through the comptroller's office. We may, we may have, Linda may have the credentials to get in, but I'm not sure that, I've never trained Linda on, you know, managing the emails and that sort of thing.
So you have the sign-in, correct?
Yeah, there's a login for the thing and you have to know, you know, the address of the agency that, you know, the website that hosts it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other council people have any questions? Yeah, at this point, we are going to move forward to our next.
I do want to mention one more thing. Of course, Dearborn is doing their budget and our charge to you, obviously, we don't charge anything for equipment and that sort of thing. That's all through separately, through your capital expenditures. We don't sell you anything other than our services. We have had our services at, I think, roughly one hundred and fifteen thousand and I think that's what went into your budget this year. Our finance department, based on history and wages and all of those things, is asking that that be bumped up. We haven't changed it for five years. They're asking it to go up to one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred instead of the, I think, one fifteen. You know, we have, for that, we provide the staff of seven or eight of us, you know, that are sort of available twenty-four by seven to assist with things. We've assisted with a number of things outside of the scope of the arrangement and that sort of thing. So I don't think it's unreasonable for that. That's basically the cost of one employee with benefits for most organizations. We provide GIS services to assist the assessor's office. We've helped the police department with camera systems and telephone systems and reconfiguring networks that weren't done properly originally. So we don't try to nickel and dime anything. We've tried to hold it constant for all of this time. So that's what they're proposing this year and I think it's reasonable for the arrangement. But, because I don't really want to get into a mode where if you have a new project, something special that needs to be done for elections or whatever, we tend to do things without having to stop and quote it saying that's out of scope and we need to charge you extra for that. We, I think we've only added a small amount a couple of years ago to the charges for a special project and I can't even remember what that is. But I like to keep it simple because I don't have a bookkeeping staff. I don't have, I don't want the techs to be clocking in and clocking out on every item. Otherwise, I think it would well exceed what we're charging and it also would involve an extraordinary amount of paperwork, which isn't what we do best. I like to be available. I can, you know, you don't have to take my word for it. You can ask a number of your department heads and other staff that we're available well outside of the normal business hours if people have a need. And on weekends, we've, you know, made sure we have staff in there so that your staff is not inconvenienced when we do upgrades and that sort of thing. So we try to keep it as seamless as we do for Dearborn and, you know, replicate that model at quite a low cost to Dearborn Heights, actually. So that.
Okay, well, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Well, thank you for your presence here today, Mr. Felkamp.
No problem. Glad to do it.
And next, we have library director McCaffrey, he here.
I didn't see him logged on.
I don't either. I think since we have Director Damski here, let's jump over to him to hope that, because we're way ahead of schedule, so he probably didn't expect us to be on this. If anybody has his number, they can text him and tell him to come and sign on. We're going to move on to building and engineering director Damski. And let me unmute him. It's not working too well. Director Damski, can you unmute from your end? I think you've got to mute it from your end. Oh, yeah. There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. How are you today?
Good.
Director Damski?
Yes.
Go ahead and you can do your presentation since Director McCaffrey is not here. We'll just move on. We're a little ahead of schedule and I'm sure people would be getting to him as quickly.
Okay, do you have any questions for me, I guess?
Did you have a presentation?
This is why we submitted, basically, it's pretty much the same as last year. Nothing really increases that much.
Councilman Muscat has a question.
Councilman Muscat? I'm sorry, I was answering a private thing that Larry.
Yeah, I see where your overtime went to twenty thousand dollars. That's quite a big jump from a thousand five hundred dollars nineteen-twenty and then you're requesting another eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, that's, we were planning to, at that time when we discussed it, to bring some part-time people in to start scanning some of our files. Now with the situation we're in now, I don't know where that's going to stand.
And the engineering services of twenty-five thousand dollars, who does that get paid to? And for what?
The services is for their, when they meet with us, they give.
Who's that?
The way trim. A lot of it's way trim for their services for the underground of the properties. When they meet with the, when meeting myself and the new business owner comes in for planning purposes, that fee was based on the prior year services for engineering through way trim.
Don't we pay them in other ways when projects go on and they get a, like, ten percent of what it's going to cost? Just, I mean, it's like it's a, keep paying and paying and paying for engineering services that every time we turn around, there's an engineering service going on?
Well, yeah, there will be with the, I mean, if they expect to have the engineering services, we need them to make sure the projects go along good.
Well, I understand that, but you know, like, we have a water main project that charges there. That's an engineering service. Is that tied in with you for inspections?
No, that's not with us. That's their, that's their whole division with way trim. When we meet with them, it's all about the planning for the new buildings going in, what's acceptable and that's what, they meet with the building department. For a water department, meets with primary public works over their fee.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand that. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Della. Unmute yourself, please.
Okay, director, can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I had some questions for you here. He's already asked overtime question. I had to ask one of the questions, but mostly in regards to the employment. If you looked on the second page of your budget, you're looking to hire one additional inspector, is that correct?
No, we hired two inspectors this year. The next year, we're not going to hire, we have no plans to hire another one.
Okay, no plans to hire another one?
We have one electrical inspector, one plumbing inspector and one building inspector and one part-time mechanical inspector.
Okay. The other question I had for you is I noticed the decrease in part-time from a hundred thousand amended budget to the seventy thousand. Is that because you're anticipating less inspections or what's the purpose of that?
No, that's because now they, there's been, two of the inspectors been hired full-time this year and they won't be no longer part-time.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Quick question. In general, are we putting the raises on hold? Do we find out what's going on? Because we're not, we're not going, we're not talking about them as we go along like we did with the comptroller.
Councilwoman Lisa Exley mentioned that we're going to hold off on the raises this year.
I, well, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that to see exactly what's going to happen with the budget as time goes on. Because I don't want to, you know, all of a sudden come back saying, "Well, we didn't discuss it" and it's going to go from fifty-five to eighty.
No, I mean, I think the agreement.
To the budget wrap-up.
Okay, we'll wait for the budget wrap-up. Okay, I can deal with that.
Councilman Della?
Okay, but if we're going to, as far as raises is concerned, and this doesn't necessarily mean yes or no, I'm just throwing it out there. If we're going to wait based on not knowing the amount of revenue that's going to be coming in at this particular point, which is, you know, fair assessment. But we probably should, it's not fair at the same time if somebody does deserve a raise to wait a whole year before we give them a raise. That would not be fair either. So maybe if we decide to hold off until we see what type of revenues come in, whether through the state sharing or whether through, you know, other revenue sources, then maybe we should reassess this and we could pick a hypothetical date of ninety days from today or whatever, just to be fair to different employees, I think.
No, quite honestly, we've done this in the past. This budget can be changed anywhere.
It's fluid, right. But I'm just saying, to be fair to the, to particular employees that maybe have deserving, we probably should, you know, pick a particular date that we will reassess because by that point, we'll have a much better idea as far as what revenues are or not coming in. Either we're getting more in or we're losing possibly.
Yeah, I would hope that we would keep track of it while we see the revenue coming in. At that point, we will address it and decide at that point what we're going to do in regards to raises.
Okay.
You know, we can amend this budget anytime we want.
Right. And again, this is not pro or con giving or not giving a raise. I'm just, if we're going to address it, let's address it in sixty or ninety days from today, I'm saying.
Okay.
That's what I had said at the beginning of the meeting that by giving raises.
We've got, we've got, we've got Clayton waiting to speak. Let me unmute her. Now I can't unmute her.
Hi there. Hi, yeah. No, I was just going to chime in and say the same thing. We really shouldn't bank on that money and should wait and I'd rather do that and then we can always amend the budget as you were saying, council chair. I think that's really important because, again, through the Department of Treasury and also the federal calls, the White House calls, we've already talked about this, that they anticipate that being significantly reduced and hopefully they're wrong. And if they're wrong, they're wrong, but I don't want to be on the other side where they're correct and we overprotect it.
Okay. Any further questions from any council people? Please raise your hand and I'll address you. I'll follow you. I see no hands. Okay, at this time, did you have anything further to say? Director Damski?
Hello, ma'am.
Okay, let's, thank you very much for coming today. We will be moving on. Next, we have library director McCaffrey. Unmute yourself.
Hello, how's everyone doing today?
Good.
Okay, so a couple of things about this budget as written. It was written a couple, it was written a couple of months ago before a lot of the events that had, have transpired over the past couple of months. One of the things that I emphasized, that I've been emphasizing in terms of what I've been doing and my planning, is that throughout this entire process, in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, when we had the last recession, we had our greatest amount of use that we've ever had in the history of the city, including when we had a population of about over eighty thousand people. So in a lot of ways, if there is some sort of a downturn, and hopefully not, libraries tend to get used a heck of a lot more in terms of what they're doing. Now, in terms of what sort of a revenue hit libraries, the libraries would get, we do not rely very much on state revenue at all. Most libraries are always funded locally and that's the case with us as well. And talking to, you know, some officials about estimates, it looks like in a lot of ways that the budget that I proposed may require some or a degree of belt tightening in that we would probably have fifty percent of what we're supposed to get from the state. We do get a little bit from the state, but most of it goes to co-ops. But overall, it looks like we'd still be in good stead. Now, on this fiscal year, we managed to also save enough money from, you know, from closing because we don't have contractors going, we don't have a number of other things going that were fine this year and were. that were, were fine this year and we're on, we're on target to meet the exact numbers that we were going to before. So if something's going to happen, you know, negatively, generally it'll happen, it lags. Municipalities, municipalities lag, so it's going to happen perhaps eight to 12 months out. That said, what I've been prepared to do is sort of do that belt tightening that I've talked about throughout the fiscal year as it goes along and make sure it's accounted for. But again, it's the the two areas that would affect us the most in terms of our revenue or the only changes that would be different for us would be slightly lower state aid, probably lower penal fines, and lower interest revenue. So that in total would probably be about 60 to 70 K, which is nothing, but in the terms of the whole budget, it's not, it's absorbable. And there are ways I can just literally just spend less and make sure that we get through that and not affect services during this upcoming fiscal year. So that's, you know, basically what I was planning for and the approach I was going to take. Again, there are some unknowns and we're not exactly sure. I think I'd listened to all of you talk about, we're not sure the revenue is. If I'm incorrect, and it's a little greater, then I can roll that into the budget too. Another thing that I'm probably not going to be doing this year, both at the end of this fiscal year and into the next fiscal year, I had a couple of large projects planned with carpet. I guess I'll put that on hold until I can make sure that that is is clear of this financial situation. We'll wait. There is one possible project, though, that I'm thinking I may still want to try to do in for three different reasons. Basically, I'm anticipating their outreach is going to be, is going to need to be ramped up a lot more, not just digitally, but post this event, it's going to be need, we're going to possibly need to deliver and we're going to probably need to work with schools to even a greater degree. We had a great crates program. We were actually loaning books out to schools and getting some, you know, interacting with them and directly trying to boost the quality of education for students in our, in our city. With that particular thought in mind, we are going to invest in getting some sort of a Ford Transit or a vehicle in terms of doing that. I initially had thought that perhaps I don't want to go that particular route being that we're in the crunch we're in. But then I thought that, well, maybe I want to make sure those services are taken care of properly and be, I don't know, maybe getting a car will help our local manufacturers out. So anyway, that may be the only, you know, larger ticket item that I have on this upcoming year in lieu of other things. So I put a couple of the larger remodeling projects aside and that may be the only thing outside of what's presented in the budget that I've put out there for you. So I wasn't sure how you're handling this. Are you guys just, I just talk a little bit and then you ask me questions or how are we?
Yeah, I've, I've got people raising their hands. First online, I have Councilman Ray Muscat.
How you doing? Hope you're doing fine there, Mike.
You too. How you doing, Ray?
Thank you. Good. Thank you for asking. Mike, telephones and insurance. When we say telephones, what are we talking about in insurance? Isn't a city self-insured for that?
Well, two things. The telephones, it's actually our internet costs. Yeah, it's our internet costs. What that is, is that's kind of been going down, actually, the cost of that. We've actually been getting better and better service for less money as that has gone on. So that's mainly what that line is. It's internet, straight up. And in terms of, what was the other part of your question?
Insurance.
Oh, insurance. That's your contribution to MMRMA for liability, potential liability, or, you know, yeah, things that happen, workers' comp liability issues. I believe it stayed at that number pretty much since I've been director.
It's just saying 27,000.
It's stayed at that number, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Constance. Please unmute yourself and speak.
Mike, computer access is going to be critical for residents that don't have a computer access. It comes to Caroline Kennedy or John F.K. and get on the internet, job plan, apply for unemployment benefits and so on. How many computers with internet access are there at John F.K. and Caroline Kennedy?
Between both libraries, there's around 60 to 65. And yeah, that's a good point, Bob. There's, there's a there's going to be a large push probably on those computers. Libraries are often involved in economic recovery after an event like this. So there's, so, so, so there's probably going to be a need there. That said, you know, of course, access will be restricted and gradual based on safety guidelines that are put forth by the state. What I am thinking of doing, though, is, I don't know how long this particular event's going to last, but if it does drag on, you know, we have a couple older laptops. If somebody's essentially needs one, we might start, you know, delivery depending on where we're at. Another thing, too, is that some libraries have also, I don't know if you are familiar, we have internet hotspots that we loan out to give internet to residences. We've had those for some time. We may get more of those units. I've put in some requests to see what the cost of those would be. If, I'm anticipating that it's going to be, you know, it starts to, you know, go into a much longer time period, then I'll start ordering more of those so our, so our residents can get some internet service should they need it for any sort of job hunting or economic recovery sort of tasks.
All right, great. User fees and fines, do you see upping either or both of those, bringing in any significant revenue, additional revenue, user fees particularly?
It's, it's, you know, it will bring in some revenue, but it isn't like other services where it would impact us. I mean, it will not make the difference generally between us offering a service or not offering a service. You know, one of the, one of the qualities a library does, or one of the things we do, is we try to give back to our residents and we try to give back to the people as much as we possibly can. And so generally, we stay away from fees and those when we can, unless a particular program or event just has a very high cost or, or some other extrapolary kind of a thing with it. But it's never, in terms of fees, what it would probably do more is just, you know, have people use it less or and, you know, generally, when you're dealing with economic recovery, you want people to come in and you want them to be able to do what they need to do.
Right, makes sense. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a.
Thank you.
Director McCaffrey, can you further explain what an internet hotspot is for anybody else that might have a question besides me? I mean, where are they located now? Or you said they're not permanent, right?
Yeah, what what an internet hotspot is, is it's sort of a, you, you basically, it's, it's mobile internet. So what it is, is much like you'd connect at home via wireless to your router, you could bring home a hotspot and connect to the internet on your hotspot instead of your router. So with people that have phones or computers or laptops at home, but for some reason, maybe their, their economic condition doesn't allow them to get on the internet or have Comcast or something, they can take this hotspot home and get internet instead. Currently, we have about 10 units between both buildings. And, you know, I would probably up that based on need and desire and you know, currently, we're sort of on stasis until the 28th, when I can let people in the building again. But after that point, our plan is for a couple of weeks to, or unless the order is extended, to first get people in the building and we need to make, there's, there's all kinds of drop boxes we need to do, deliveries we need to do, books, we need, a lot of stuff needs to happen for about a week or so or two weeks, depending on, and we'd stay closed for the first week or two. And then we'd offer a curbside service and maybe some delivery to residents from one to four weeks, depending again on circumstances. This is all fluid. And after that, we'd see where we were with letting people into a small part of the building, just a few computers, much more controlled environment. And from there, we'd expand it to the whole building and we would also have a lot of restrictions and conditions on that. And then maybe phase five or six would be back to mostly where we were before with a couple of exceptions. But, yep.
So do we charge for the internet hotspot? Can we loan it out to the residents?
No, we do not. There is, we do not charge, we do not charge residents for any service. Really, the only thing we charge are fines if you're late with the hotspots. But yeah, so we charge them if they don't return them.
So you check them out like a book?
Yes, you check them out like a book, correct. And it's for, it's for a week. Yep.
And they need the power source, I'm sure, right?
Yes, yes, it comes with a hotspot, an old power cord, and instructions on how to use it and a little camera case.
Okay, perfect. And does anyone else have any further questions in regards to the council? I'm not seeing any hands. Right now, since we're at the end, this concludes our budget hearing for Monday, May 11, 2020. I'm going to open it up to public comment. I've got Zuhair. Okay, go ahead. I unmuted you.
First, thank you for, you know, coming and doing this meeting. And I want to thank our first responders, especially the fire department and the police for what they're doing for the community. And about the budget, we are in time of crunch. I think this budget has some numbers which are out of reach, especially with what's going on in the country. The state share of revenue, 6,088,000. I don't think we're going to reach that because lots of, you know, revenue the state is not getting, especially the, probably because of people not driving that much, people not doing lots of activities. So this number should be reduced by, I would say, 5 to 10%. The same, the same thing for the district court. And I would like to hear from the Director of the Building and Safety, how confident he is about the 11 million in and change. Is that the number can be reached with what's going on?
Oh, are you talking Building and Engineering Director?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if he can.
Has apparently left.
Okay, I really think we should be very, very conservative about this budget so we don't fall short at the end of the year. And I would recommend, you know, at least 5 to 10% reduction in this budget. So we'll be on the safe side instead, you know, we end up with a negative at the end of the year.
Right, like we stated, the budget is fluid and we won't deal with that at the budget wrap-up. Therefore, the changes will be made and that is a front.
About the salary increases, I think the mayor should have been more cautious about it with what's going on. I would love to give those people any number if we have the money, but I do agree with Councilman Muscat and the rest of you that it should not be more than 3%. And it should go to the library because they didn't have any increase in their budget. And I really appreciate that he didn't put anything, but I think they deserve it with what they're doing. So they should get the same thing as the rest of them. And about the overtime was the police. Last year was 450,000. This year recommended 1,150,000 dollars. I think we would, we would be serving our community far better if we hire more people as, as fast as we can.
Okay, yeah, the police were not on today's budget.
I know, but I wrote, you know, my comment. I don't know if I will be able to watch the, you know, the rest of it. But, you know, those are my, my comment and I hope, you know, that we don't have to reduce the budget. But knowing from a previous experience around the world what's going on, I think we should be more conservative about this budget. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilman Constance has his hand up. Go ahead, please. Unmute yourself. Councilman Constance, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
Oh, there you go.
Just to echo what Mr. Zuhair Abdul-Hakz said, is hopefully the stake gets back to work. It's anyone's guess what'll be happening, but in our area, particularly because we are a manufacturing center with record number of people filing for unemployment, I think the city's going to be taking a huge financial hit. A lot of that will depend on what happens with their property values. But I don't see long-term the demand for residential housing being what it was, and I don't see the property values being up. But I suppose there'll be a lag because the assessments will stay what they are for a while. But I, I think we're going to anticipate a large drop in revenue, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comment from the audience? Well, I guess this concludes our study session for Budget 2021. Everybody have a good day and thank you for coming.
Good job. Thank you.